Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerome, Melton, Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please come to order first of all and then stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today I want everyone to do me a favor. You don't have to do it right now, but I would encourage all of you to go home this evening, fall on your knees, and pray for our country. We have some challenges in our country. We have still challenges in our city. But we can overcome those challenges if we recognize that we have more in common than what we have as relates to our differences. We can get through this. We could be a better nation. Go home. Let's start to pray for that. And let's wake up and be better people tomorrow than we were today. Thank you all. I got the chair person.
An affidavit. A publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the open meeting act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this city council, our meeting of Omaha City Council. The council thanks you all for being here today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, I would ask you all to at least turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Items six to 10 relate to the same project. Anchor Point Villas located at 173rd and Potter Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item six is an ordinance to rezone this property from AG to R4. Item seven is an ordinance to rezone this property from AG to DR. Item eight, a resolution to approve the revised preliminary plat for Anchor Point Villas. Item nine, a resolution to approve the final plat for Anchor Point Villas. Item 10, a resolution to approve the Anchor Point Villas subdivision agreement.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers six through 10 are today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant also with me today is Gal Bol of E&amp;A Consulting, the consulting engineers in this particular project, simply here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Motion? Moved and seconded to approve items six through 10. There are no lights. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerome, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Items six through 10 are approved, seven to zero. Items 11 to 13 relate to the same project. Northern Hills Estates 2, Replat 2, located at 12323 North 69th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 11, a resolution to approve a special use permit application submitted by Keith Edquist for a major amendment to the existing special use permit to allow development in the North Hills Environmental Overlay District. Item 12, a resolution to approve the final plat for Northern Hills Estates 2, Replat 2. Item 13, a resolution to approve an amendment to the Northern Hills Estates 2, Replat 2 subdivision agreement.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 11 through 13 are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Mark Westergaard with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road. I'm just here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items 11 through 13. There are no lights. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerome, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 11 through 13 are approved, seven to zero. Items 14 and 15 relate to the same project. Ekerman Place, item 14, an ordinance to rezone property located at 5051 Center Street from GC District to CC District. Item 15, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC Overlay District to incorporate into that district the property located at 5051 Center Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 14 and 15 are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Nate Boss with Olson Associates, 601 P Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. Here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items 14, 15. No lights. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerome, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 14 and 15 are approved, seven to zero. Item 16, a resolution to approve a special use permit application submitted by T-Mobile Central LLC for a major amendment to a special use permit to allow a broadcast tower in LC District with a waiver of Section 55-348 height to allow 112-foot tall tower located at 15220 Military Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 16 is today. Proponents, please.
Nate Miller, SSC, just here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 16. No lights. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerome, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 16 is approved, seven to zero. Item 17, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Paul J. Lally doing business as the Touch of Class Lounge located at 11220 Fort Street, Suite 101.
Public hearing on agenda item number 17 is today. Proponents, please.
Paul Lally, 3326 South 90th Avenue.
Thank you.
Touch of Class Lounge.
Thank you. Just here to answer any questions we might have. Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard on item 17? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 17. No lights. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerome, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 17 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 18, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for 72nd Street Hospitality LLC doing business as Doubletree Omaha Southwest located at 3650 South 72nd Street. A's communication from the chief building inspector regarding a required permit for the outdoor area.
Public hearing on agenda item number 18 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerome.
Yes, I know the applicant manager on this one, and while we normally require them to be here, this is opening back up after extensive remodel. So I would make a motion to approve subject to obtaining the proper permits.
Seconded. Moved and seconded to approve item 16, subject to permits. There are no lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
I mean 18, I'm sorry.
Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerome, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 18 is approved, seven to zero. Item 19, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for DDFR Inc. doing business as Twisted Post located at 14901 Industrial Road.
Public hearing on agenda item number 19 is today. Proponents, please.
Felicia Parker, DDFR, doing business as Twisted Post, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerome, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 19 is approved, seven to zero. Item 20, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Nom and Sons LLC doing business as Tobacco Outlet located at 4747 South 96th Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 20 is today. Proponents, please.
Mount Shaw, current owner of Tobacco Outlet on 4747 South 96th Street.
Thank you. And you're just here to answer any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second. No lights. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerome, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 20 is approved, seven to zero. Item 21, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Pit Stop Inc. doing business as Pit Stop located at 4015 South 42nd Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 21 is today. Proponents, please.
Tim Peggy Paris, owners of Pit Stop, here for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 21. No lights. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerome, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 21 is approved, seven to zero. Item 22, a request to appoint Farhan A. Siddiqui as manager of Ayub Enterprise Inc. and Seventh Heaven Inc. doing business as Midtown Gas and Grocery to their Class D and Class B liquor license locations at 1222 South 24th Street, 2302 South 13th Street, and 1349 Park Avenue.
Public hearing on agenda item number 22 is today. Proponents, please.
Farhan Siddiqui, from Seventh Heaven and Ayub Inc.
And your address, please.
My personal or the 2302 South 13th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68108.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerome, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 22 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Moved and seconded to approve our consent agenda. No further lights. Roll call. I'm sorry, you got a light? I'm sorry, Mr. Harding.
Number 26, which is the Elkhorn Suburban Fire Protection District. Just want to thank Jim Lang, Bill Armbrus, and Travis Harlow from the Elkhorn side, and then the Chief Olson, the mayor, and Marty Bealick from the city side in working out the agreement. I think it's going to be good for all parties, and I just wanted to recognize our efforts.
Thank you. No further lights. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerome, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 23 through 26 are approved, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 27 through 49 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. And for those in the audience, we are going to take off of consent item number 43.
So we'll have a separate public hearing on item 43.
Are there any proponents to be heard? Seeing none, are there any...proponent?
Proponent.
For which item?
Forty-nine.
Okay.
Yes.
Forty-nine?
Louis Humanaus, 3126 Chicago Street. Mr. President, last time was before the council regarding the formation of the Destination Marketing Corporation. You didn't want me to talk about my experiences or about the people I know. Am I going to be allowed to have a dynamic discussion on this? May I focus on the macro and the micro?
This is on appropriation of the money.
Yeah, this is on appropriation.
Right. Number 49?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
You can talk about the appropriation.
Okay, well, first, let's incorporate some backstory to this. The Douglas County government collects a lodging tax. That's money that is given to the hands of this Omaha City government to do asset wealth for the promotion of tourism for the benefit of local hospitality industry. Last year, the city set out to charter a nonprofit corporation to transfer that money from the city's coffers to this new profit, nonprofit, the Destination Marketing Corporation. The primary purpose for such a scheme was to skirt full transparency, the birthing document read, in part, whereas the nature and amount of the subsidy is considered proprietary and commercial information, which, if released, can be used by competitor cities to the disadvantage of the city of Omaha. This was the first for the city, and the setup is first of its kind. At one point in debate, discussion went to the metaphorical windowblinds. How much sunshine are we letting in? Why so secret? The resolution passed. The board of the nonprofit consists of the city attorney, the finance director, and the council's chairman of the tourism committee. They've done their work. Now the money flow starts. The present resolution is authorizing some hundreds of thousands of dollars as incentives to supplement more than 27 million that will be spent on conventions in the coming years by outside entities. One thing I've learned thus far is that long ago, along with potholes and poverty, the city is highly concerned with cocktail parties, which is fine. It's good for business. I support this resolution in its entirety, Mr. President. I only ask that you consider the following resolution. Those who have seen this resolution say it's a good idea. This resolution has weathered two city clerks and nine council members. The reactions have been like it, but I'm a lame duck, or these things take months, years, five years, or I'll support it if the late work is done, or I want to see the Hospitality Association involved, and I'll consider anything. This is what the Omaha Convention and Visitors Bureau Director and President had to say when I sent him the resolution, which he says, "As a follow-up to our conversation following last week's city council meeting, I appreciate your interest in revisiting the corporation board structure as outlined in your resolution. Should the council wish to revisit the topic, I would be happy to address any concerns or suggestions at that time." Thank you, and that's from Keith Backson. So the resolution primarily puts two more board members in the governing board of the DMC, the Destination Marketing Corporation. So the resolution provides another set of eyes to the board. Once you may shut the blinds, I ask that you consider this resolution, but I do it, but do it not because I ask. Do it because avoiding secrecy and providing transparency is a matter of practice. Thank you, council members. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. As we said, we're going to take 43 off of consent, so we're...moved and seconded to approve. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerome, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 27 through 49 minus item 43 are approved, seven to zero. Item 43, a resolution to approve the professional services agreement with SCS Engineers to provide engineering services for the solid waste collection contract assistance project in the amount of $99,515.
Public hearing on agenda item number 43 is today. Proponents, please.
Hello, I'm Michael O'Hara, 6010 South 46th Street. I'm appearing in favor of this. I'm representing the Sierra Club. Previously distributed to each of you was a binder with slides. I won't go through all of them. It's for your review. Not with me right now is David Corbin, who is out front dressed as the bag monster. For security reasons, they obviously didn't want someone they could not identify here, but we invite you to stop out at some time and see him. He's wearing a year's worth of plastic bags, and we would like to take action on that. The first thing we would like you to do is to focus on the RFP. This proposal that you're going to vote on is going to approve. Someone to write the RFP is most critical that you participate in that. The most important thing to the Sierra Club is that we maintain separate collection of yard waste and that we have composting of the yard waste. In terms of that, I'll also provide to you that on Earth Day, we circulated petitions and received over 1,000 signatures from Omahans saying they would like to see yard waste continue to be collected separately and not composted. We would like you to see Make Omaha Grow self-supporting. There are ways to do that. Lincoln copied our program before we had some changes in it in Omaha, and they are self-supporting. They charge a tipping fee and a higher price for the product. Part of the reason it's lower cost, it's priced too low. It's an enterprise fund. You might want to spin that off and privatize it, having demonstrated that it does work as a concept. With respect to plastic bags, we would urge you to implement a plastic bag fee for retail single-use sales. They cause all sorts of problems for the recycling center. They cause all sorts of problems for the Parks Department. They cause all sorts of problems for your waste collector. It is bad to have those bags out there, and we would suggest using the money you raise on those fees for a education in solid waste reduction. We're pleased to see that the mayor has suggested you go to CNG trucks. That would really help in reducing air pollutants. With respect to the hefty bag program, the Sierra Club has voted, the local group, the Missouri Valley Group, which is Omaha North, has voted against that mostly because of the record for air violations by the firm that's going to be incinerating those bags, and that mostly we would request that you make sure the RFP includes incentives for less waste as opposed to more waste. For example, Sarpa County has just implemented a similar automated can collection process using the 96-gallon, but they also went to smaller sizes and required in their RFP that whoever bid on it offered different prices for different-sized cans. If I have, if I'm planning and I have an all 96-gallon cans, then I must assume every can is full. I design my routes that way. If, however, the routes include many cans that are a smaller size, then it should be a shorter route, a faster route, and you'd be able to get for less cost at the city price. Also, many of you went to the open houses. I saw many of you there. I've done a lot of politics. The hottest reaction I've ever seen in politics is that 96-gallon can being mandatory. The idea of starting with a 96 and then letting them trade down is just going to buy a lot of worthless 96-gallon cans. At home, I have a 35. It's never full. You should not have to pay 96 gallons if I'm never going to fill a 35. In terms of the RFP, we would really like to see it that it rewards people for recycling, that if you're filling out those recycling bins, that you get less in the way of property taxes for waste collection. And in terms of why we most want to have composting, I would suggest you turn to slide 20, the one that looks like this. And basically, the lower graph and the upper graph are why you should always have a methane collection system. The methane collection system is necessary because all landfills everywhere always produce methane. You want to collect as much as you can. The reason that the waste collector would like to place the additional yard waste in there is to increase the methane. They will collect more methane during the period that they collect methane than they create, so that'd be a net positive. However, you'll notice that the upper graph is wider in time than is the lower graph. They're going to increase methane more in total than it is reduced by collection. That's significant because methane is, depending upon who you ask, which is mostly dependent upon when you ask, is between 23 and 34 times worse than carbon dioxide. Also, it hits, it evaporates from the environment quicker. It's measured in decades as opposed to centuries. If you'd like to take your foot off the global warming pedal, reduce the amount of methane you put in, and it will reduce it faster than doing other things, such as compressed natural gas, although that will help. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard on item 43? Are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President, and thank you to the Sierra Club for coming down and sharing those observations and remarks and opinions with us, many of which I agree with. I also do support this contract today as the next step, and we need to take to modernize our waste collection systems. But I do want to ask just a few questions, I think, of the department for the record that we've talked about in committee and otherwise during this process, because I want to make sure that SCS continues this process in reforming this bid. But as we do that, we continue to accept public input like we had today, and that eventually lead to an RFP that addresses some of the issues we heard a lot about in these stakeholder meetings and that we continue to hear about day-to-day with our collection services. And I agree, those top three things probably are cart size, if we're moving to cart size, what are those options, 96-gallon, 35-gallon, or otherwise, and where would they be stored in areas like mine. But then certainly the separate yard waste collection, and my strong opinion also that we should continue that effort and continue that composting, even if that requires some changes to the composting program to make it more viable. I think that should be on the table, too. And anything we can do to enhance our recycling options, because we don't do that very well right now. We recycle about 11% of our material right now as a city, and that's not nearly where we should be, and it's not good enough for the next 10-year contract we might entertain going forward here. So, Mr. Stube, a question to you, and I think the answer is yes, but I want to make sure, that going forward, all of those things are still on the table for discussion and have not been decided upon as we go about structuring this RFP at this point. Is that correct?
Bob Stube, Public Works, yes.
And there'll be additional opportunities for the public to weigh in. Can you describe that process going forward?
Well, we've had multiple opportunities where we've gathered input from the public, whether it's through the survey that was done under a previous contract, whether it was the open house that we allowed for comments. Obviously, we will continue to take public comment. It could be through the mayor's hotline. It could be through our waistline. But yes, public comment is something that we will continue to gather.
Can you talk about the timeline a little bit? This is a major undertaking, not only the RFP structure, but then the actual bidding process, to the extent that this is, the soon as this would come back to the council in some kind of form, it sounds like fall of 2018, right?
That is correct. Currently, the existing contract expires at the end of 2020. Obviously, there's a desire on the mayor's part, and I believe on others' part, that we try to get something done before the expiration of that particular contract, but that's somewhat dependent upon who the successful bidder is. We will try to essentially have the request for bid documents completed by the beginning of next year within the intent to advertise, put it out on the street for a number of months to allow for input, and then have essentially a pre-bid meeting, and then get those bids in, and then there'll be a process of evaluating that. So we're looking at probably the second quarter to the third quarter of next year before that would be determined. And then once that is done, there's a significant amount of effort that would take place after that from the standpoint of whatever cart size that we have. That would have to be, orders would have to be placed. That would have to be rolled out. The other thing is, is we agree that some type of alternative fueled vehicle is something that's preferable. That would also have to be something that will be determined relative to the rollout of when that would actually occur also. So we're looking at, you know, probably at least a year before we would actually have a new contract in place. And again, that's somewhat dependent upon who the successful bidder is.
Right. And so if there were changes, or if there was a new bid to be adopted, the soonest the public could see changes is probably 2019.
That is correct.
Okay. And when you go to actually put the bids out, is there a resolution that comes to the council on that?
Yes, there would be a document that would come in front of city council that you would have to approve for whatever that recommended outcome of those particular bids would be.
Okay. I think that's helpful, too. I mean, as we've discussed, I'd be unlikely to support a contract that didn't include the things we just discussed in terms of cart size. the things we just discussed in terms of cart size options and recycling enhancements and a composting program that's viable, or at least have those things priced and sent to market so we can evaluate them within the structure of this bid. So, both are things I'll be looking towards as this process continues and as that resolution you described does come back to us before it's even put on the street. So, in addition to efficient and timely collection, I do think we need to have this contract do a better job with our environmental interests, as well as enhanced recycling. With that, I would motion to approve this resolution today.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Jerram.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I, too, would like to thank the Sierra Club for coming today and sharing the information that you have. For me, as we move forward in the process, one of the most critical pieces of the puzzle in determining where this process leads is the public input portion and the opportunities for people in the community to tell us what it is that they want and are willing to pay for. And so, I want to just make sure, as we move forward, as I understand, additional opportunities for the public to have input, just to make sure the record is clear from the director. Mr. Stube, did I hear you say that there would be a resolution that came to the council on approving the RFP before it goes out, at the time that it's developed, or only once it has gone out, and then you produce who you think is the lowest, best bid responsive to the RFP that has been placed?
Bob Stube, Public Works. I guess my intent with my answer was that the actual awarding of the contract would come in front of city council. I guess we haven't really delved into that situation where there would be a resolution coming in front of council that would actually establish what that bid document would look like. Obviously, as chairman of the Public Works Committee, you know that we provide information and get feedback from council members all the time, and so I would assume that before that bid document is put out on the street, that we would give you as a committee an opportunity to look at that document.
Well, I'd like to ask you to consider, in the process, some additional flexibility for more input from the public. You've been very accommodating so far in terms of holding these town hall meetings and conducting surveys, and here today, having people come to talk about this contract, and that, once you develop what it is you think you're going to go to the streets on, if you had a resolution that came to the council, it would be a public document that people could then come and have a public hearing on, as we weigh it as a group collectively to either thumbs up, move forward, or otherwise, through tweaks or modifications. It doesn't mean that that can't happen in the committee process, which it also should occur there, but for me, the public input is the most vital part of this process on this contract. And so, I just ask you, you don't need to answer that today, but just to think about that as we move forward.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Just real quick, not to duplicate too many of the things that were said here, I just make sure that you encourage all your constituents to continue to call. I've been getting a number of calls on this, and it's nice to be able to make sure that those people contacting us understand that, I think, with some of the comments that have been put out there, that they assume we're getting the 96 gallon tub and things of that nature. It's not. So, just encourage everyone to continue to call us, the mayor's hotline, Public Works, attend town halls. I hope there will be plenty of opportunities to make sure all that information gets to the contractors that put this, the RFP together.
Thank you. Ms. Melton.
And I just want to say, I think public input's important, and those four open houses, I actually attended all four of them, not just the one in my district, because I wanted to hear what the public wanted all over the city, not just the people in my, in my area. And I can tell you that we had a lot of big turnout at all four. People were very interested in it, and so I think that was an excellent example of how you can get public input, is by doing that. And I really do appreciate the number of people in Public Works that came to all of them, gave up their time with their families for those evenings this summer. And I did, I think what I heard the most from people was that they wanted the option of a smaller bin, and I think that those are some things I think we've already decided that we should put in. But then there were some other things, like putting Keep Kids Alive, Drive 25 on the sides of the big barrels. I'm a big proponent of that, so I just didn't want to let today get through without nudging that a little bit, Mr. Stube, and maybe if we could get some private funding to pay for that, and it's a win-win for everybody. So, I'll continue to work on that one. But there are things that we can do, like to combat speeding, and we're talking about garbage cans. So, it's kind of a unique concept that I hope we can, we can work into both. And I do think, I do hope that there's a possibility of getting a true bid on the cost of co-mingling versus the cost of composting, because I think we need to see what the actual figures are before we make that decision, and then figure out what our options are. I think, like there was a mention of privatizing. I mean, I don't think anybody's against composting, but if we do it, what's the best way to do it, and how do we pay for it? So, thank you very much for coming down. You put together a very comprehensive booklet, and I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further lights. It's been moved and seconded to approve item 43. Roll call.
Pauls Palermo Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerram.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 43 is approved, seven to zero. Item 50, a resolution that the city council hereby urges Congress to act swiftly to adopt the legislation necessary to protect America's Dreamers, A's Communication and Support.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. For those who are here for item 50 and intend to speak, would you raise your hand so we know how many there are? Okay, we would like for you to get as close to the podium as you can. The one thing that I would suggest to you, and I would suggest wrongly to you, is that be as brief as possible. Try not to, try not to say anything that has already been said, but we do want to hear from everyone. We want to hear your thoughts. We also want you to be respectful of others in the room who may not agree with you. So, let's move forward with that. And first, with, on item 50, let's have the proponents who wish to be heard, those in favor. We're not going to use the lights.
Hello, Mr. President. My name is Jonathan Renteria, here as an ally of DACA youth. No amnesty, no in-state tuition for illegals, no driver's licenses for illegals. This was the rhetoric of Mayor Jean Stotther's 2006 campaign for state legislature. I hope that this state body, and especially the mayor's office, continues to distance itself from these positions, both in policy and rhetoric, and we continue to support DACA youth and everything they have contributed to the great state of Nebraska. In that same campaign, she received the endorsement of Governor Dave Heineman, who said, "Jean Stotther understands the burden illegal immigrants face on the taxpayers of Nebraska." More recently, as recently as 2015, she said, "I do support a path to legal status. For those who came here as a minor, we should make children of undocumented workers who are on the path to legal status have the tools they need to be productive members of our community." We have begun to do that as DACA youth that surround me and our leaders in our community. We have made progress on in-state tuition for DACA youth, as well as driver's licenses and professional licenses for DACA youth, and we continue to advocate on behalf of them and everything that they do for this great state.
Thank you. Can we have your address, too? You got my name?
11915 Wecley Plaza.
Say that again.
11915 Wecley Plaza.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Eileen Burke Sullivan, the Vice Provost for Mission and Ministry at Creighton University, 2500 California Plaza.
David Weber, Professor of Law, specializing in immigration law at Creighton University, 2500 California Plaza.
With your permission, I'd like to read a letter from our president to the council.
Please.
Dear members of the Omaha City Council, as you deliberate issuing a resolution of public support for the DACA youth and Omaha Dreamers, I have asked our representatives to iterate my strong support for these young people. Creighton University is committed to supporting our DACA students, and we reaffirm our commitment to standing with them in this time of uncertainty. In November of 2016, I joined presidents of other schools, signing three documents nationally in support of this. As Catholic and Jesuit, Creighton University is committed to upholding the human dignity of each person, strengthening family bonds, and allowing every student the opportunity to maximize his and her God-given talents through higher education. Creighton joins many universities, the United States Conference of Catholic Bishops, and in calling on our public representatives to create a permanent solution through the Dream Act of 2017, to allow our DACA students the ability to remain in the United States, to complete their studies, and to continue to contribute meaningfully in our communities as they have done here in Omaha. Colleges and universities have seen DACA youth in our classrooms, as our colleagues and friends. Despite the challenges they face, they have made incredible contributions to our country, to its economy and its security. They should continue to be able to do so. If we are unable to protect these Dreamers, we will be shutting the door to an entire cohort of individuals who seek to contribute their best to America. As president of Creighton University, I join with over 800 businesses and industrial leaders in asking that Congress provide Dreamers with the permanent legislative solution that they deserve, that will secure their future in these United States. The United States Chamber of Commerce also supports this request. Children brought to the United States at a young age did not have a choice in the matter and are today Americans in every way but immigration status. It remains in America's best interest to enable them to use their knowledge, skills, and energy to continue to make the strongest possible contribution to our country. We stand ready to work with you and with Congress in a bipartisan manner to address this issue as quickly as possible. Sincerely, Reverend Daniel S. Hendrickson, S.J., Ph.D.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to add that there are currently over 800,000 DACA students in the United States, over 3,000 in Nebraska. These are individuals, young people who have gone through background checks, have been vetted by Homeland Security. They have succeeded despite all this adversity. They are studying or have studied in high school, universities, graduate schools, and professional schools. They are a tremendous asset. They are tremendous people. We strongly advocate that you become an advocate on their behalf in securing them a permanent solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Armando Besseril. My address is 8075 Reddick Avenue, and I come to you as a proponent and as a DACA recipient. I guess I'll kind of go into what a lot of these people have said in terms of that we are an asset to this country, we are an asset to Omaha and Nebraska, because just my own personal experience, I came here when I was four years of age from Mexico. All the odds were against me. I probably shouldn't be where I'm at right now, but fortunately enough, I was able to graduate from the University of Nebraska-Lincoln with my undergraduate degree in accounting, as well as my master's degree in accounting. So, after that, I started work with KPMG as an audit associate in the prior year. So, I've been fortunate enough to continue to be employed by them for a year now, and kind of like they mentioned, it's a tough situation, but the thing is economically and on the fiscal conservative side, if DACA recipients were to be, say, deported from the country, the country would lose a lot of money. I think the estimates are that over the next 10 years, they lose over, the country will lose over $400 billion in GDP, and that's pretty big, especially with, you know, the amount of debt that the country's in and everything that we're trying to fund. So, I just want to, first of all, thank you for putting this together, because I read this, and I was like, this is literally everything that I've experienced, you know, came here as a child, you know, looming uncertainty pretty much every single day, because I don't know what will happen, especially since the Trump administration decided to resent DACA. So, I just, you know, want to say that I'm here as a proponent, not just myself, but also as my community, and I just want to say thank you, guys, for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Come forward, please.
My name is James Sackett. Your name and address, 18412 Emily Circle, Elkhorn. I sent an email to all of you, I don't know if you got it, about this, and I probably would just reiterate what I had, what I said in that email, and I said, I don't believe that any existing Dreamers or Dawkins or whatever, however you want to consider them, I don't believe that they should be deported. I mean, they were here, it was not their fault that they were brought here. They have contributed a lot to our society, and I don't think any of the existing ones should be deported unless they are found to be criminals, you know? Major misdemeanors, felonies, and things like that would be a justification for deporting them. And I do think that they should be allowed to, not only allowed to, but required to apply for actual citizenship. And this could take some time, because like, there's some 3,300 in Nebraska and 800,000 supposedly nationally, so it could take some time to do this, but I think they should go through that process and actually become citizens. I do think that we should probably not allow future children to be brought in this manner, because this is, it's a pretty difficult thing to police this, but I think the future, the existing one should be allowed to stay, and anyone who comes in the future should come legally, should enter the country legally. I also think we need to check to make sure that those who are here, who are going to be allowed to stay here, have paid their fair share of taxes. There are a lot of opponents who say that allowing them to remain would be a problem, would be, put a burden on United States and Nebraska taxpayers. Well, that would only be true if these people were not, you know, paying their fair share of taxes. So, I think that something ought to be done to make sure that that is occurring, and I know some probably kind of slipped under the radar a little bit because they didn't have legitimate social security numbers, maybe, or something like that. So, it'd amount to doing a tax audit and just, if they have back taxes that they should have paid, then they should pay those, give them a certain amount of time to do that, because they probably couldn't pay it all at once. And then, I did say that there are some perks that they receive that kind of, American citizens don't necessarily receive these perks, even though they're legal citizens. Like, I gave an example of a kid who lives in Council Bluffs. He wants to go to the University of Nebraska Omaha. He's got to pay an out-of-state higher tuition in order to attend, because he just doesn't happen to be located in Nebraska. He's a legal citizen of Iowa, a legal citizen of the United States, but he has to pay this higher, higher payment to the school, whereas a Dreamer who happens to be located in Nebraska gets the in-state tuition, even though they're not a legal citizen of Nebraska, or a legal citizen of any state, or a legal citizen of the country. So, I mean, there are some perks there that maybe a, either should not be allowed to have, or maybe Americans should be allowed to have them too, or something, I don't know, make that a little equal. But anyway, I do support your resolution, and I just think we just need to try to make it fair for everybody, so.
Thank you. Any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Jean Reiner, 5646 South 140th Avenue. I'm a representative of Omaha Community Together One Community, or OTAC, and OTAC has a commitment to make positive changes on issues affecting families in the Omaha area. We are a faith-based group and presently have 20 congregations, eight community organizations, and other groups which are members of OTAC. We work on issues important to the community which surface from our member institutions. We stand in support of the resolution of Councilman Vinnie Palmero, which urges the United States Congress to enact legislation in order to protect the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals, or DACA. We believe that our members of Congress need to know that our local elected officials want them to take action to preserve the legal status of these young adults. They are a fabric of our communities. We respectfully request you vote to support this resolution, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
My name is Stanford Malmarts Brown. I live at 1308 North 40th Street, and we've heard Christian representations, but since nobody else has come up with a Jewish representation, I decided to share that with you. I've not been designated- I've not been designated by any shul in the city, so I am speaking on my own behalf. But I come to share with you, since social justice is a cornerstone and has been a cornerstone of Jewish teachings since the days of Moses. And it, one of the teachings is to welcome the stranger among you and treat him as part of your own community. And the teachings are encapsulated in teachings in the words of the prophet Micah, after whom I am named, in my Hebrew name. And the teaching is encapsulated in his most famous quote, "Know, O man, that you have been told what God wants of you and what is expected of you: to love justice, to practice mercy and to walk humbly with your God." In other words, do the right thing. And this is what we should do by passing this resolution in favor of accepting and keeping the Dreamers among us and extending the benefits that they've been accustomed to receiving for all these years and not yanking the rug out from under them. That is not Jewish practice and it is not among the Christian practices that the Christians have adopted from the Jews. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Hello, my name is Alejandra. My address is 1414 Bancroft Street, and I'm the coordinator of Young Nebrascans in Action, in which a lot of us are here to support this resolution. First, I wanted to thank you guys for starting this discussion in the local level because Young Nebrascans in Action, what we've been doing is, is just a group of young people trying to protect each other with the social issues. So this is, this shows a lot of initiative from Omaha that we are, we're going to be supporting DACA recipients in our own. So I am very thankful that we're starting this discussion here, and I hope to see that this is going to pass and we can start putting pressure into our federal representatives to start supporting us, as well as the Omaha community supports all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Buenas tardes. My name is Amor Habab Mills. I live on 106 Old Hickory Road. I am a DACA recipient. I like to call myself a Dreamer. I am organizing the Nebraska Dreamers currently, and first of all, I want to thank you for writing this resolution. It brings me peace to know that you guys are on my side and that even though this is not affecting you directly, that you know this is unjust. I do want to bring something to your attention. Like I said, I am really thankful for the resolution. I am just worried that what's going to happen if Congress does not act. I think that on the city level, I don't know all the rules and processes for driver's licenses. I know it's at the state level, but I would encourage you to talk to the Nebraska representatives and tell them that hopefully not, if nothing happens with the Dream Act by March 5th, that we still are able to drive. And why do I encourage this? Because if I were to be pulled over after March 5th and nothing happens, more than likely I'm going to get a ticket for driving without a license. And I see this a lot in the undocumented community, they drive without a license. So I think that this is a pipeline to get people, you know, have to pay these fines, it shows in their criminal record. So I would encourage you to talk about this because this impacts you. Something else that I want to bring up, yes, Dreamers, we have pretty much no criminal backgrounds, but our parents are undocumented. And right now, there has been situations where people show up to court and ICE is there to detain them. And what does this create? People are afraid to show up to court and follow the laws of their city, of their home, yet if they know ICE is going to be there, they're not going to show up, and that leads to more problems on the long road. So you guys have more power than I do, you can be more of an advocate, people are more likely to listen to you, so please bring those up, driver's licenses, and please stop having ICE show up to court. I work at an immigration law firm and we see that under the current administration, ICE has been showing up more than usual. And people are terrorized, they are scared. And right now, the resolution is, like I said, a great idea, but we need to think on the long run of what could be the worst possible scenario. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? On the proponent side, how many more want to speak? Come on down, please, if you can come down.
Hi, my name is Samantha Chavis. I live on 6216 South 140th Avenue, and I just wanted to make a few quick points. So I have the privilege of being a U.S. citizen, and I don't think that my life should be valued as well as my contribution should be more valued than that of DACA recipients all over every one of the districts here in Omaha, as well as the city and state. Like a lot of people have commented, that DACA recipients, they provide beneficial contributions, like pleasing, they pay taxes when they go to school, they don't have any form of financial aid that they can apply for. Because of their status, they are not allowed to take out any grants or loans. And then they, they don't have a criminal background as well, that's because that's checked through USCIS. So I just wanted to make a quick reminder that they contribute to our city and every district, so that is our state and our nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Janip Onet, 4502 South 14th Street. A proud South Omaha resident all my life, and I'm very proud to say it's my city councilman who brought this forward. The DACA program was a very wise choice for our government to make. They are looking towards the future when they allow the students to apply or the immigrants to apply for this. I'm a second-generation immigrant. I'm the second generation born in this country of a family of immigrants. We're all immigrants here. So our country needs to think of the future in many different ways. And those children that were here because their parents brought them here deserve an opportunity to blossom in our country, and they are blossoming now. We cannot cut those buds now. We need to let them grow and we need to let them continue to contribute to our economy. And the future, who knows? When real immigration reform happens in the future, these will be students, they will be employees, they will be business owners, they will be community leaders who will help a lot in developing that program. The other thing I want to say is, a lot of the folks that I had worked with came out and told me they're DACA, that they're waiting for their opportunity to become U.S. citizens. Folks that I have known for very many years, in my 30 years of activism in South Omaha, that I had no idea. They were in the community, they were volunteering, they were doing positive things, getting education, starting businesses, the kind of people that we're proud to have in South Omaha. So as more and more people revealed themselves to me, I realized how urgent it is for us to address this issue. Although you can't change federal law as city council people, you can as individual voters. And showing the strength of Omaha behind the DACA population is going to be extremely important, as some of the other people have said, in the long run. So long-term resident of South Omaha, proud to be in this country myself, proud to be raising children in a bicultural family, and I'm hoping that people can think in the long range. Thank you, Vinnie.
Thank you. I think there's one more proponent that was, yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Dina Draskovich. I am a resident of Omaha. My address, yes, 1600 Rolling Bridge Road. I am here in support of DACA recipients and the youth that is the future of this country. This resolution impacts every one of us, regardless of your skin tone or your ethnicity. We have 3,690 DACA recipients in Omaha, in Nebraska. We should be standing united with them, all as one. People Quest have brought up that they contribute to our economy. Let me tell you exactly what they contribute in state and local taxes alone. It is 7 million, over 7.6 million dollars. That is a huge boost to this economy, and they're working and they're earning it. I'm very fortunate in that I have a father who is an immigrant to this country, and he's Chicano. Had he not been allowed to immigrate to this country, I wouldn't have a father to raise me, and my daughter wouldn't have a grandfather. I've been with him in the car while he's been pulled over because a Mexican can't afford to ever drive a BMW. That should never happen in this community, it should never happen in Omaha. I am here representing an active grassroots group that stands in solidarity and links arm-in-arm with the Chicanos and the youth of Nebraska. We are one, we stand in solidarity, and we won't go away. And I appreciate, Vinnie, you putting this bill together with this resolution, because what you are doing is you are sending a message. You are sending a message to Senator Sasse, Senator Fisher and Republican Bacon, what this city wants and what this city demands, and you are doing what our federal-level representatives have failed to do to date. Thank you for taking this effort. I encourage Jean Stotter to sign off on this resolution, and together, when we stand as one, we are united, we are the majority, and we will win. Thank you all DACA recipients.
Thank you. Thank you. We don't shout out here, okay? Thank you. Are there any other proponents? I want to make sure that we don't get, that we don't miss any proponents. Seeing none, are there any opponents that wish to be heard?
Good afternoon. My name is Susan Gumm, and my address is 9718 South 176 Ave., and I am representing Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom Project Immigration. I oppose the City Council DACA resolution to protect America's Dreamers. The priority should be to protect America's citizens. Are we to exercise compassion to illegal aliens at the expense of lawful immigrants, American workers and taxpayers? Where's the compassion and concern for American children and their parents who have dreams too? Americans want our borders secured and our immigration laws enforced, not amnesties. Passing any amnesty signals that were not serious about the enforcement of our laws or our borders. Congress and DACA parents are responsible for our current dilemma. If Congress passes legislation to protect Dreamers, will they also fix what caused these young adults to be in their current situation? It is the American workers and taxpayers who are paying the price for illegal immigration. Nebraska families struggling to raise their own children must also subsidize K-12 education and in-state tuition for DACA recipients. Provided with work permits and social security numbers, 800,000 DACA recipients can now compete with Americans for the better-paying jobs. We need more jobs for our less skilled, less educated young Americans and minorities, not more unfair competition for jobs. DACA recipients have been portrayed as de facto Americans. Contrary to media portrayals, DACA applicants need not identify as Americans, demonstrate any affinity for American culture and are not required to speak English. The eligibility bar was set very low, allowing people with multiple misdemeanor and certain felony convictions to be approved. The Department of Homeland Security has had to revoke the status of over 2,000 DACA recipients due to criminal conviction or gang affiliation. DACA beneficiaries received only lean and light background checks, only a handful of the applicants were ever interviewed, and only rarely was the information on the application ever verified. How many other criminals have slipped through the vetting process? While DACA recipients may be in the country through no fault of their own, when a person is unlawfully in our country at the age of 18, they are then considered an adult and here illegally by their own volition. It is nearly impossible to remain in the country illegally without breaking multiple laws. Illegal aliens who commit identity theft, document fraud, social security fraud, falsify I-9 employment forms and fail to pay taxes clearly are not ordinary law-abiding residents. Illegal aliens commit serious felonies to obtain jobs and other benefits reserved for American citizens and legal residents. These are not victimless crimes, and the damage for the victims can be substantial. The federal government turns a blind eye to these crimes. Why are illegal aliens allowed to commit crimes that American citizens would be sent to jail for? Please remember that young Americans have dreams too. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Jim McGinnis, 4860 South 53th Street. I'm here to speak of why we have this issue with DACA and where it came from. It came from an issue back in 2001 with Senator Durbin and Orrin Hatch, Senator Orrin Hatch, who for some reason brought up the Dream Act, first proposed on August 1st, 2001. The 1986 immigration law was passed. Durbin and Nancy Pelosi was there with Reagan, and they all promised each other, this will be the last time we do amnesty, this will be it. From 19, from the research I've done from 1986 till 1996, when another immigration law was passed, it was purported, reported that 2.1 million illegal immigrants crossed our border. So, so much for the 1986 law. What happened from 1996 to 2001, it's hard to say how many came across illegally. What Durbin and Hatch proceeded on doing is pulling the heartstrings of the American people by calling for a Dream Act, so that the children who came across the border with their parents, who didn't know any different. When people cross the border illegally, by the rule of law, by our constitution, that it stated that basically, the point is, is if you cross the border illegally, you will be sent back. That was the 1986 law with many other provisions to it. When that did not happen, then obviously, our two, the two senators I had spoke of decided to pass the Dream Act for the first time. It's been, since 2001 up to 2010, numerous times reenacted or re-induced, reintroduced to both the House and the Senate. In 2010, last months of 2010, because President Obama said on June 15th, 2012, I stand here in the Rose Garden telling my, the people of America, the citizens of the United States, that since the House has passed, the House passed the Dream Act in 2010, but the Senate will not take it up. I know I'm not supposed to do this, he said it many a times, but I am signing DACA so that these children can be protected from not being sent back across the border. That is unconstitutional. He is faithfully, faithfully to execute the law of the land, he did not do that. At that time, we had a House Representative here in the 2nd Congressional District who was, was supposed to, Mr. Lee, Representative Lee Terry was clearly, should have brought up impeachment charges on him, along with other House members across the country. That was not done. So my point that I'm just going to sum it up to you all, this is our document, this is what we live by. We have numerator powers, power, numerator power number four clearly states, the Congress, and I mean the Congress, not the executive, the Congress, the legislative branch of our government shall have the power to establish a uniform rule of nationalization. That's their responsibility, not President Obama's responsibility. So all I'm going to say, if we passed the 1986 law and we did not enforce the 1986 law, and that goes for the executive branch and the administrations of H.W. Bush, that goes for the last two years of Reagan, and that goes for the last, the eight years for Clinton. years for Clinton, and up until this law came, the first time the Dream Act, when Bush was in, the W. Bush was in office. If those administrations don't want to enforce the law, then the House members should be bringing up impeachment charges on every one of those presidents. They did not. If your Congress is not going to enforce the Constitution, then we have to suffer the consequences if we don't, and that's what we're suffering right now. And I thank you for letting me speak on this. I could say more, but that's enough for right now.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Any other opponents who wish to be heard? Go ahead. Okay.
David Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette, Omaha, Nebraska, United States of America. I have a little bit of evidence for you here. Many different websites that will present facts to you, facts that refute some of the things you've heard from the proponents, facts about the cost to us, the legal citizens. This is a republic, not a democracy. Fifty-one percent doesn't win in a democracy. It does.
Address us, please. Thank you.
Excuse me?
I said, "Address us."
Oh, well, the people. I don't hate them. I don't hate them.
Yeah.
I like everybody. I'm a Christian, okay? I could accept anybody. I just want to point that out. However, I'm also a little bit tired of being called a hater, because I believe in our Constitution, I believe in enforcing our laws. I believe our government representatives are supposed to do that. Obviously, they have not. I'm the hater because you haven't done your jobs, Congress hasn't done their jobs. That's what you're elected for. You represent us. It's not a democracy. You are elected representatives to speak for the nation, not for the 51%. The DACA is an unconstitutional act by what I consider an unconstitutional president, and nobody holds him to it. They want to hold Mr. Trump to it for enforcing the law, however. And Jim is right, we are in a very dangerous time in our country right now. We're fighting for a democracy versus a republic, and pretty soon you'll see the more rioting in the streets. Right now, we do have Muslim Brotherhood people starting to enforce on our city councils, our county governments, our county Republican parties. Here in Omaha, we do have a Muslim mosque here in Omaha, first in the nation. Yes, it's not a DACA, but we also know that not all of the DACA's are students. They cannot vet all the DACA's because they never reported themselves. They're not all bad people either, but how many years have they had to get on board with the law and do what their responsibility was, to come in and go through a legal process? Not their fault, but no, it's not some of the people's fault over in Syria and Iraq either. We don't run a republic on the basis of it's not their fault. We run it on the basis of law. Your resolution is not an enforceable resolution, it's not a law. So, why are we wasting taxpayer dollars on this? Supporting the people that want to support DACA, that's all good feely stuff. I support any citizen that wants to earn his way, don't matter their color or when they came in, but I have to do it legally. I expect my grandson to do it legally. I expect the young Vietnamese guy down the street to do it legally, and he does. He works very hard. He's an example of what we want as an immigrant. But not all of these people are, these are maybe all students, and they're not all enemies. But we can't, we can't give out the freebies and forsake our own citizens. There are a lot of our own citizens being forsaken because the money's not there. Your state government budget is going kaput, and what people won't talk about, including yourselves, is how the budgets you make and how the budgets they make are going to come up short to support the DACA's, but to support all the illegals also. They're illegal. Now, a police officer cannot stop and ask anybody their immigration status. To me, that's unconstitutional. Your job, first of all, under the constitutional oath that you swore is to protect us, our citizens, our country, our values, our culture, our laws. Now, if they're bad laws, you have representatives that can change them supposedly. We don't change them by public opinion.
Can I get you?
We don't change them by 1%.
Can I get you to wrap up, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Just a few long things. In the long run, let's not lose our republic. It was not a wise choice to pass DACA. It was an unconstitutional choice. We're sending the wrong message by listening to this. You hear the rosy language from them, but they paint us as a smousy, the hateful language. I'm not a hater, neither are they, and we don't like it. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Don Schlegler, 200 Key Line. I guess first I'd, I'd like to tell you what my lineage is. I'm the son of American Revolution. My lineage goes back to the American Revolution, which doesn't mean my ancestors lived here, they fought in the American Revolution. This whole immigration thing is really not a victimless situation as it's been portrayed. I'm in the construction industry. I grew up in Omaha, Nebraska. I went to Benson High School. I moved to California and lived there in the 80s and 90s, worked construction, started out as laborer, worked my way up to Jurnan Carpenter, got my general contractor's license, moved back to Omaha in 92, and the economy out in California went south, and I dealt with illegal immigration out there, and I've been dealing with it here ever since. I moved back in 92. The employment level here was 2.5%, which is full employment. And at that time, we're exporting jobs out of the United States to China. At the same time, we're importing labor into the United States. They come to Omaha at a time where contractors and construction workers should have been making a lot more money, wages should have been going up because of the supply and demand. It was artificially held down because of all the illegal, all the illegal immigration that came in. I don't know exactly, I mean, I've been dealing with this since then, and...
Excuse me, just for a second, if I could keep you on the resolution, you know, talk about whether you...
Okay. I just wanted to give you some history, okay?
Yeah, but just stay on the resolution if you would, please.
A few years ago, I went down and I testified down at the Unicameral about the in-state tuition and allowing the children of illegals to attend the University of Nebraska. Down there, I testified that, that we were not only allowing the students to go to the University of Nebraska, we were also going to pay, going to allow them to go and pay in-state tuition, which meant the taxpayers of the state were going to pay 2/3 of their tuition. I testified and asked, why couldn't we take, if you're going to allow them to go, let them pay full state tuition? I mean, it's no different than what that gentleman said before. Somebody from Council Bluffs, been working in Omaha his whole life, decides to go to the University of Nebraska, he's been paying taxes and doing all this stuff, why couldn't we take the 2/3 that, that allow them to pay the full amount, take the 2/3 that they were going to, they were going to subsidize, the taxpayers were going to subsidize those people with, and take it to North Omaha where we have 43% unemployment? Why couldn't we do that and tutor those kids to graduate from high school? To qualify to go down to the University of Nebraska? And to successfully go through the University of Nebraska, and if necessary, help them tutor, tutor them down there too? To help a community that I don't see a whole lot of help going to. There's a lot of emphasis on South Omaha and all this illegal immigration, but that seemed to make sense to me, and especially in a situation in an area that, that needs that kind of help. It obviously fell on deaf ears. You know, they passed this. Again, victimless, this is all about, there's no victim here, there's, there's tons of victims here. You know, there's, there was, there's a finite amount of kids that can go to the University of Nebraska, and, you know, you're allowing, you're allowing some people to go, that means that some people don't go.
Excuse me again, the resolution.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I think I am talking about the resolution, Mr. Gray, and I am talking about your, your district, but for, for, just like right now, if you, if you allow, so these kids go through, they get a degree, and then they go, and so there's somebody that didn't get to go, and as I expressed, I think it would have been a lot better to have our assets in North Omaha, but, so this kid goes and he gets a job down at First Data Resource, and 15 people apply. He gets the job, and probably through affirmative action, he qualifies for affirmative action, so he gets, gets, gets a better leg up than, than some of the other kids. Somebody there's a victim, aren't they?
I want you to stay on the subject of the resolution, first of all, but there are a number of things that you say about affirmative action and other things that are just not true.
Okay.
But let's stay on the resolution, if we could, please.
Okay, as I said, I don't think this is a victimless crime, and I went to the University of Nebraska at Omaha, and I, I met a friend of mine from Bangladesh in accounting class or economics class, I don't remember which, became real good friends with him, and became good friends with all the international students who came from everywhere on the planet to go to school in Nebraska. And I became such good friends with them and such a good ally to them that I was voted in as the first person to be on the International Student Organization Board. Now, all of those people did, they, they all applied for a visa to go to school in the United States. Once they graduated, then they applied for a green card and got their jobs. Almost every one of them, matter of fact, every one of them that I can think of is now a citizen of the United States, one of them's Ushu Daron Zios, and I, I...
Let me get you to wrap up.
I sit and look at what's going on here, there's entitlement, and...
Let me, let me get you to wrap up, if I could, please.
How come I got such a short time period?
No, you didn't get a short time period. What are you talking about?
In my, I just think there's entitlement here, and, and I don't think that the City Council is setting a good precedent here. These kids could, could also go back to where they were born, wherever it is, apply for a visa to go to, go to schools here. Then, once they do that, just like my friends did, just like every other international student has to do, lawfully do this. They're not, they're not lawfully, you guys are entitling them because they've been here to do something. You're not standing here and saying, now that you're 18 years old, we can, we can all feel bad that your parents brought you here at age five or six or nine or whatever it was, but why is it now that at 18, you're not saying, you know something, here's the gateway to coming here? Apply for a visa, apply for a school visa, go to school here, just like my friends did, and then, once you, once you do that, then you apply for work.
Okay. I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? The public hearing is closed, Ms. Melton.
My button was still on from the last...
Oh, your button was on from the last time.
But I will speak if you don't mind.
Okay. All right, go ahead. I'm sorry, Ms., I didn't...
Oh, no, that's okay. I just wasn't ready.
Okay.
I was ready to, I am ready to speak. First, I just want, somebody said that they're doing this to the Congressman. Congressman Don Bacon did send the following statement. "I and my staff have met with more than 300 DACA youth and family members over the past six months at locations such as UNO, St. Mary's, South Omaha High School, and committed to defending law-abiding DACA youth from deportation, as this is the only home most of them have ever known. It is important as part of this solution to ensure we strengthen our national security and reform our broken immigration system. I have already co-sponsored three pro DACA pieces of legislation and was one of six Republicans in Congress to sign a letter asking President Trump not to discontinue the protections of DACA. The impact of failing to protect DACA recipients is substantial, and I'm committed to solving this issue." So, I, I think Congressman Bacon has already given his position on this, which somebody else, I think, mentioned political, so he's already given his position. I think most of us have already given our, our position. I can't speak, but I think the majority support DACA. Mayor Stotther has already given her position, and she did so before the election, and I think everybody here knows, somebody, I think, mischaracterized it earlier. But this is, this is the problem. This City Council was elected to govern the city. Should we now issue resolutions in regards to North Korea and sanctions on North Korea? Are we going to revisit tax reform, what kind of tax reform we have? Because that affects all of you, everybody sitting in here. Healthcare, again, affects everybody, DACA recipients, us, everybody's district, from District 1 to District 7. I mean, there's a number of people in my district that would really like me to do a resolution on defunding Planned Parenthood and on the 20-week abortion act, because they feel that strongly about it and about those pro-life issues that we have in Congress. Everybody in, in this room is very important. I am not going to start addressing federal issues on the City Council floor. There are a lot of federal issues that are extremely important and are more important than the zoning issues that we took care of the first half of, of our City Council. But I didn't run for Congress. If I want to address those issues, I will run for Congress. If I'm going to address federal issues, I was elected to deal with city issues. So, at this point in time, I'm passing, I'm passing on the vote. The reason I'm passing on the vote is to make a statement that we aren't going to argue these, these issues. There have been a number of issues over the last couple of years in regards to Black Lives Matter, Ferguson, and some other issues that severely affect our North Omaha community. We aren't putting those resolutions on our agenda either. Those are things that are going to have to be dealt with at the appropriate level. This, we do not have the jurisdiction over this issue. Whether you like it or don't like it, we don't have the jurisdiction. I think the good professors here would back me up on that one. And so, that, what I want to say is, we just spent all this time, and I understand, everybody got their feelings out, but you know what? All that did is we just had to listen to people attack each other on an issue that shouldn't have been brought to City Council anyway. I saw people here who were mad about what one side was saying, and then the other side was mad, and I, you know, maybe even making good statements. Why did we need to bring that kind of dysfunction that we see in Washington to our city? I don't want to do that. Our City Council gets along very well. I do not want to start debating federal issues on Tuesday afternoon. So, I, I support Congressman Bacon's stance on this, and that's going to be, I'm going to pass on any federal issue that comes in front of our city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Festus.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just want to say I'm inspired by the supporters that are here today, especially those that are personally impacted by what's happening, your courage in the face of that adversity to continue your day-to-day life, and also your courage for being here today and for speaking on the record here at City Hall. I agree with the resolution today. I was a co-sponsor of the letter we sent to our delegation, and also Councilman Palermo's resolution today. I do think it's important that we, we Omaha, be perceived and in actuality be a welcoming city and help everyone achieve their full potential. I think that is critical to the future of our economy, and I think it's the right thing to do for families. I think that's why almost every major employer, the Greater Omaha Chamber of Commerce, the University of Nebraska, Creighton University, all of our major entities are supportive of this issue as well, and many who have spoken here today, which I also appreciate. So, we do urge Congress to take care of this issue so that we aren't disrupting students, and we aren't disrupting families, and we aren't disrupting our economy in the next several months. And I, I do think from time to time, although our resolution does not impact the issue... And I, I do think from time to time, although our resolution does not impact the issue directly, uh, we don't have that authority. But I think from time to time, an issue does, uh, rise to the occasion of local bodies speaking out to do what's right and to send a message on behalf of our citizens and our constituents when we think something needs to get addressed. I think this does rise to that occasion, so I think it is appropriate we vote this today. And I, I think that we, and I hope that we vote this in a strong majority to move it forward to Mayor Stottard, who I believe will sign it, uh, because her position is consistent with that. So, um, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, President Gray. And I will, I will keep it brief, I promise. If, uh, history has shown us anything, it, it's shown us there's a time to stand up and a time to speak out, and that time is now to be on the right side of history. Uh, for the 3,000-plus Dreamers in Nebraska and the 800-plus thousand and growing across our nation, I support this resolution. I think it's important as a body that we show, uh, how we stand for our community in which we're elected to represent. So, uh, I appreciate all those standing with me here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Harding.
I will not be as eloquent nor as passionate as, as my friend to the left of me, uh, Ms. Melton. But my vote today is, is certainly not a reflection on the testimony that was given here today. There were many good points, um, raised and warrant serious consideration and further discussion, but in the proper form. Um, it was a matter that will be discussed and decided at the federal level, not the city. And a few weeks ago, there was a letter circulated, um, among the council and, and several members did sign that. And I thought that was a very effective tool and a very effective demonstration. But I, you know, I, I don't think it's the council's place for a resolution, um, for this resolution to weigh in as, as a body. As Ms. Melton said, after all, are we gonna do the same to voice our opinion on removing the United States from the Iran Treaty or condemning Kim Jong-un and his quest for nuclear arms or repeal of the A.C.A. or impeachment proceedings on council members in Bellevue? I appreciate the comments and positions expressed here today, I really do. I think we've heard from Congressman Bacon and his position. But as, uh, with Ms. Melton, I will also be passing on this resolution today.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a line that I'm reading. The city council hereby urges Congress, urges Congress to act swiftly to adopt the legislation necessary to protect American Dreamers. We're, we're asking the Congress to, uh, get on the ball, get on the moods. I personally, I've always argued against having these type of resolutions in front of the council in the past, because there's been a few of them in the past that I, I voted on, but I wasn't really crazy about, because I didn't know if it was under our domain or under the, our, our direction. Uh, but I basically, I started just jotting down, uh, some, some ideas, uh, by, after listening to the individuals. I can tell you right now, I don't have the answers. This is a complicated issue, and it will, as I see it, we're urging the Congress, let's, let's, let's do something. Let's get on, let's find the answer. We know we're gonna find the answer someday. This is not just gonna go away. Someday there, an answer will be found. Now, some of us in this room may like it, some of us may not. But this is not going away. And this is what is causing me, and I'm gonna vote on it, although, like I say, I've had some hard times in the past on these. This is what I heard. The Chamber of Commerce is for this. Many business leaders are for this. And OTAC, many churches are for this. Creighton, the symbol of this city, and I happen to be Catholic, so that probably hits a, a little, uh, jingle right there. I have a feeling, I don't know how many, I've not discussed this with anybody on this council. I don't know how the council's gonna vote on it, but I have a feeling it probably will pass. But to me, the kicker in this deal is when the mayor ran for legislature, she was against this idea. And last year, is I, if I'm, I hope I'm not mistaken here, she was for this. She sees a need for this. Now, we say that we shouldn't be doing this, because we're a council and it's not really, uh, it doesn't fall under our direction. But if the mayor thinks enough of this to promote this, that means it falls under the city of Omaha in her eyes. I had that much faith in it. And I know most of the people around here think the mayor's doing a pretty darn good job. And I know the mayor personally, having worked with her in the middle of a public school. She's just not gonna step out there and just start flailing. She has thought this thing through. Again, uh, Vinnie, I, I, I know where you're coming from, and I, and I respect you for that. Uh, this does sort of put me in a bind, because I, I would, personally, I wouldn't vote for this typically. But I think it's time for, at least you have a feel how we stand, you know? My vote, I don't think too many people in Congress are gonna say, oh gee, Councilman Pauls in Omaha, Nebraska voted for this. They, they just probably, they smiled, they said, who's that person? And, you know, sometimes somebody here probably think that also. But I, I, there are just too many things I was jotting down that says, hey, we, we think something needs to be done. Now, for those who are what I'm gonna call the Dreamers, it may not happen totally what you want, but it does need to be resolved. It just does need to be resolved. For those people who think you should go back to your countries where you originated, that, we know that's impossible. That is not going to happen. It may sound good. I may stand up and say, they need to go back. It can't happen. It just physically cannot happen. So, enough of that. Uh, I do appreciate you bringing it front, although, uh, it may have been better another, uh, place. Your letter was good. That was, uh, you know, did give some direction, but you're forcing, uh, let's discuss it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Jarom.
Thank you, Mr. President. I couldn't help but think of all the famous moments in, in the birth of our country where the prominent citizens of our country, who were then actually citizens of, under the throne, of a king, who expressed themselves and their desire for forming a new country, had they just signed that document, comma, pass or abstain. And there's certain moments when you know that there are things that affect you, your life, the people around you, your neighbors, your neighbors' children, uh, your community, the businesses in your, your, your neighborhoods, uh, the schools, the universities, uh, various iterations of every form of community organization, whether profit, nonprofit, um, where you hear from so many different people, uh, that they're impacted by this, and you have an opportunity to, um, remind your congressional delegation of the need to fix this issue, that why in the world, when it's so impacting to our community, we would want to pass on that? For me, it's not something I would ever think of passing on. It's an opportunity to stand up and be heard for the people we represent, to urge the people with the power to legislate on this issue, that we as a community and the people here want them to do their job and address this issue, so that the citizens of our community that rely upon the community of interests, that's many of whom have been here today, have an opportunity to live in peace and to contribute to the society in our community. So, if this passes, I believe our clerk will forward this resolution onto the mayor, and if she signs it, which from her statements, I don't have any reason to believe why she wouldn't, because she said publicly she's committed to the Dreamers, that then this would go on to Congress, to the clerk of the House Representatives, and to the clerk of the Senate, and allow them to know that in Omaha, we view this issue as critically important to our community, to people who live here, to the businesses here, to any number of issues. So for me, it's of utmost importance for my name voting on this to be heard on behalf of the people who elected me, as to the importance of this issue to our community, and to not pass on this. I will be voting for this, will be voting on this and voting for this, because this is so important. The businesses of our community are telling us it's important, the universities of our community are telling us how important this is, the religious institutions are telling us how important this is. It's, it's so rare, even opponents. I look for opportunities to find common ground with opponents that may disagree with my opinion. And I heard several opponents say, this is Congress's job to fix this and address this. And one person was very concerned that there had been presidents that failed to address the issue, presidents that engaged in this issue in excess of what they thought was their constitutional power. So here, we have an opportunity to weigh in with our Congress on this issue, and I think I want to be heard. I don't want to miss this moment. I want Congress to know what the people of District Three and the person who elected them wants Congress to do on this. So, um, I want to thank Councilmember Palermo for bringing this resolution forward. I did sign the letter, uh, that went before, and I will be voting for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, one thing I do disagree with you on this, because this to me is a unique, I understand the significance of this, but I think that if I chose not to vote on it, I should be, uh, respected, that my decision is not to vote, because I do not think it belongs here. I, I'm just gonna be frank with you. I, I know where you're coming from, but I'll also say, uh, I should be allowed to do that without, uh, feeling, uh, not doing my job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. 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 Jarom.
And likewise, I feel for wanting to vote on this shouldn't be something that I'm putting another light on. I don't, I don't think there was any effort on either side to do that, so.
I will, there is a, uh, the resolution is on the floor. I, I guess I'll make one or two comments here. First of all, um, I would also like to thank, uh, Councilmember Palermo for bringing this up. Um, I, I'm, I also like to thank you for the letter, you know, helping to produce the letter that came as well. Um, and I think we have an opportunity, I think we have a chance, well, we have an obligation to look at these, look at these issues and think of them in a thoughtful and a rational manner. And I think we are attempting to do that. And again, as I said at the beginning, some, we're not gonna always agree, uh, but we can always find ways to work together. We have more things in common than we have differently. Um, I heard a comment that was made by one of the individuals. I don't know if it was a proponent or an opponent, but one of them made the comment that, uh, their ancestor, um, fought in the Revolutionary War. And I wanted to remind him and everyone here, so did I, so did mine. Um, and then, secondly, I mean, I think the last thing I would, I will say, hopefully to provide a little comic relief, I hope, is that, um, I think the Native Americans are sit back, sitting back wondering why all these black people and white people and Latino people are sitting here talking about immigration in a country that belonged to them. So, with that, I guess I'll ask for, I guess I'll ask for, is there a motion?
I approve the resolution.
Moved and seconded to approve the resolution, and no further lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Councilmembers Harding and Melton passed due to a potential conflict of interest. Item 50 is approved, five to zero.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item.
Item 51, an ordinance authorizing and providing for an issue of special obligation refunding bonds in aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $5,500,000 for special obligation refunding bonds, the Riverfront Redevelopment Project Series 2017D.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 51 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 52, an ordinance authorizing and providing for an issue of special tax revenue redevelopment refunding bonds, an issue of special tax revenue redevelopment crossover refunding bonds, and an issue of special tax revenue redevelopment bonds in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $14 million for special tax revenue redevelopment refunding bonds, Series 2017A, special tax revenue redevelopment crossover refunding bonds, Series 2017B, and special tax revenue redevelopment bonds taxable Series 2017C.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 52 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 53, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Brenda L. Daley and Associates in the amount of $36,504 to provide funding for the position of the Project Safe Neighborhoods Director of Operations.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 53 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Can I have someone close that door, please? Excuse me. Excuse me. Can we take it outside, have someone close those doors or something, please? Thank you. Let's get them to close the door before we do the next item, okay? All right, next item.
Item 54, an ordinance to approve the City of Omaha and Douglas County application for the fiscal year 2017 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program in the amount of $380,836 for law enforcement programs, prevention and education programs, prosecution and court programs, mental health programs and planning, and evaluation and technology improvement programs during the period of October 1, 2016 to September 30, 2020.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 54 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 55, an ordinance to accept the bid from L.E. Upfitter to enter into a two-year price agreement for ballistic vest systems with the option for two one-year extensions at the sole discretion of the City of Omaha in the anticipated amount of $497,745 for 900 vests over a four-year period.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 55 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 56, an ordinance approving an agreement with Brian Sparks of Cass County, Nebraska for the land application of stabilized sewage sludge.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 56 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 57, an ordinance approving an agreement with Douglas K. Nielsen of Cass County, Nebraska for the land application of stabilized sewage sludge.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 57 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 58, an ordinance to amend certain portions of special ordinance number 10217 levying assessments for the improvement of a local roadway by removing the assessment on the property located at 2626 South 97th Avenue in the total amount of $2,528.55 plus accrued interest.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 58 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 59, an ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code, Chapter 36, Article 3, Division 6, by creating a new section prohibiting pedestrian use of certain medians within the public right-of-way, A's communication and opposition.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 59 is today. Uh, before we, before I call for proponents and opponents, I would like for, uh, Ryan, one of our city attorney, Ryan Wees, to come up and, and give an explanation or at least an overview of what this, uh, this ordinance is about.
Ryan Wees, Assistant City Attorney. Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the city council. The ordinance that is presented for your consideration today prohibits the access or use of certain medians within the public right-of-way. As drafted, it is what is considered a content-neutral ordinance, meaning that it applies to everyone equally, regardless of that person's viewpoint. In drafting this ordinance, the Law and Public Works Departments analyze local and national data and attempt to identify evidence-based standards to base the ordinance on. In doing so, we believe that we have drafted an ordinance that identifies a significant government, public health and safety issue, and that the prohibitions that the ordinance contains are narrowly tailored to address this interest without overly burdening any First Amendment freedom of speech issue that the proposed ordinance may have a secondary impact on. The Law Department has also had continued discussions with the Public Works Department to clarify how this ordinance will be implemented. It is our advice that the most dangerous intersections be identified initially using several lists of the 100 most dangerous intersections that the city maintains. Um, these lists should have been given to each of you before the city council meeting, but admittedly, you may not have had an opportunity to review those lists yet. Then, if additional signage is needed in the future, uh, the Public Works Department could use a variety of ways to identify those new intersections, anything from an increase in accident rates at an intersection to an actual pedestrian particular collision, uh, to phone calls from the public making the department aware that a particular hazard exists. Finally, during the public hearing, I would advise that the council keep in mind the legal standard that the city will be held to if an ordinance is passed. That standard is, is the ordinance content neutral and is the ordinance narrowly tailored to serve, uh, significant-
With that, are there any proponents who wish to be heard on item number 59? Proponents?
Libby Davis, Omaha Police Department, 505 South 15th Street. The Omaha Police Department has reviewed this ordinance and backs it completely. They look to see it as a very useful tool.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Anthony Kiddo Jr., 2596 Crown Point, Omaha, Nebraska. I am a proponent of the ordinance, but I think it's not necessarily needed in that respect under three caveats. One, you have a laundering law in the state of Nebraska, and the City of Omaha has an ordinance for it. You also have people who are out there on the corner, holding up a sign, and in areas that are high-concentrated. That's going to force it to other areas, so you have to address that as well. There could also be concern about trespassing. The other thing is they're out there smoking, drinking, leaving their trash there. That's, you know, littering in public. So therefore, if you have... You pass this ordinance, take the corrective measures to do it more simply, just universally. And when I say that is, you could detain these people right now for littering, laundering. You have that law on the books in the City of Omaha because you passed it for cruising in certain neighborhoods. That's been on the books for years. The other thing is, if you're going to do that... I don't want you to punish the homeless people. Nobody does. That touches on our heartstrings. That's everybody. The open-door mission has made it clear, don't give them money, send them to us. I've seen people out there holding signs, "Get a job." And if they're out there for eight hours, they should probably go get a job somewhere. But some of them have a disability, and I understand it. And they don't... We don't have enough training programs for that. For the Omaha Police Department, if you see somebody out there, you have your cameras, you have your body cameras, take a photograph. If they're out there more than two days, guess what? You're under arrest for littering or laundering on public property unnecessarily. That gives them to move on, to get better, or to go somewhere to get help. This law is needed, but you need to force it a little bit more compassionately, because all you're going to do is either force it to other areas of the city, and we see them everywhere, in this city and in the county. At some point, you're going to have to make a decision, what are we really going to do? Are we going to force them to go to a homeless shelter? Are we going to force them to get some help? Or are we going to just punish them? And that's not what we want to do as a city. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
My name is George Huttaker, and my family and currently myself reside at 5026 South 23rd Street. And my family has pretty much owned that property for what I'd like to say is close to 100 years. I've watched in the last 40 years my neighborhood change through basically three ethnic groups. It's the same thing. We all have people that have needs. I think the situation here is, this is a good start with your offering, your ordinance attempt. But as he tried to express, I've thought a lot about it. It falls very short. To begin with, I think we really need an educational program that helps direct people and their funding and their good intentions to be better directed to such organizations such as Stevens Centers, Goodwill, and those folks. Because what's happening is, with people with good intentions that drive by and give that handout, some might be a bottle of water, sometimes it's money, but what ends up happening is this person is out there in a dangerous area that affects every driver's. I think we all have a responsibility to be... To do it right. We don't give somebody a gun. We don't allow somebody to go out and burn in dry season. We have a responsibility. And let's... You know, I'll be the first to tell you, I don't think anybody wants to be out there on the street panhandling. But the reality of it is, I live in a neighborhood, I am the buffer zone of the residential to the commercial. And I will tell you, my first anger goes to all the commercial establishments that are selling, to begin with, the individual alcohol cans. It starts there, in my opinion. That's what I saw come into my neighborhood. I was a proponent against that ordinances in my neighborhood. Of course, it's business. I understand it. But there's other things that go with this. If you're going to have commercial areas, and these situations are generally most prevalent around those areas, there are homeowners such as myself, such as the gentleman before me, who is hurting. Hurting because we're left dealing with the vagrancy, the urination, the bodily waste, the hepatitis areas in our yards and adjoining areas that we... That our families participate in. And all this comes back to, to the fact that most of the places that these folks end up in, the first thing the commercial businesses do is they shut down their restrooms. The next thing you know, whatever's passed off to these people, look, if you... Wherever corner they're at, I guarantee you, if you look within probably 50 yards, there's going to be a clump of trees, somebody's garage, a business, and that's where these folks are relieving themselves at, and that's where all the trash is going. And I'm dealing right now with a situation where I have, even though there's a 12-foot barbed wire fence, of course, the businesses, they do their snow removal, the trucks back in, the fence gets damaged, and guess what? I have no power to help keep those transients out of my area because those commercial folks don't really feel the same hurt that I do to have their fences repaired. I have down wires in my area right now that although my good man Vinny here, with good intentions, drove through the neighborhood, spotted areas that he felt needed to be cleaned up, and it ended up being my backyard. But none of this is from my cause, and it isn't from nearly 100 years and over 40 years of trying to get my commercial businesses to do the right thing. So this is a good step. I'll shut down for now, but I'll tell everybody, I'm happy to start an organization that is out for educating the public and to help fix this problem, because I've had enough of it. So if anybody here is willing to help join me on this plight of educating the public and all the people that want to give out the window when in fact it's better, we have better ways to put their funds to help these people so we can clean this up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Janet Bonnet, 4502 South 14th Street. I am in favor of the ordinance, but I am fearful of how it will be used for enforcement purposes. That's my concern. There are hundreds of ordinances on the books that are supposed to help clean up our neighborhoods, and they're not enforced. People have to complain before anything is done about it, abandoned vehicles, yards full of vehicles, people paving entire yards when they're not supposed to. There are ordinances and ordinances and ordinances that are brought up, and people say, "Oh, yeah, this is great. City Council passed this. It's going to cure all our ills." It doesn't, because the enforcement isn't there. We don't have a designed program for an enforcement that will result in really curing this ill. We don't have a system, whether it's a charitable system, an educational system, or even a law enforcement system, that will help us cure this ill. So it needs to go beyond today and passing an ordinance that makes your constituents feel happy that you're going to get vagrants and homeless people off of the corners. I don't know how many accidents have been caused by these people, so whether it's a safety issue in that sense or not, I don't think so. It is a safety issue and a health concern, because yes, there are human feces, there's trash left behind, they beat down the grass, create erosion issues in certain areas. But the very fact that there are people generous enough to give these folks money, food, water, once in a while, there is a desire to help. So make this ordinance a way of helping Omaha, not just creating another feel-good ordinance that won't get enforced unless somebody gets pissed off. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
My name is James Medlock, and I am an opponent. I submitted a letter...
Address, please.
Oh, James Medlock, 628 North 40th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68131.
Thank you.
I submitted a letter to the clerk. I hope it was transferred to all you. I find that the homeless problem is not the problem. It's a problem, not begging on the corner. Charging somebody $500 and six months in jail for being on a corner is not going to stop the homeless problem. Panhandling does affect people. Obviously, if they're panhandling, they're broke. We need to create a better way of servicing these people, not threatening them with jail and fines. None of the pedestrian fatalities that I've been aware of by checking with the state have been caused by people panhandling. I think this law is just another, like the lady said, another feel-good fix. This is not going to work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
I've got some of these here. It's just kind of a stream of consciousness I wrote out this morning in terms of my thoughts on the way that the legal framework plays out.
Okay, name and address for it.
I'm Brian Gonzalez of 320 North 40th Street. First of all, I think that this does come down to a question of competing interpretations in terms of the way that the legal framework plays out in terms of this debate. But I wrote this down this morning. "I stayed up all night trying to collect myself enough to come up with the most powerful ethical appeal to an ordinance which is so obviously a part of an insidious, anti-panhandling agenda that is disguised as a call to action of public safety. Upon doing the most basic amount of research, I can more easily establish that the sophistry of the ordinance itself is enough of a reason why it should not pass. I would like to point your attention to the ordinance itself and its disregard for years of legal precedents, constitutionality, and what I believe is a disgrace to the field of environmental impact studies. I'll start with the fact that this ordinance has an increased public... Has it... Has an increased... Is an increase in public safety concern that outweighs the cautious pilot-like guilt that proponents get when they accidentally make eye contact with someone begging for change on a median. Passing this ordinance will only increase the amount of phone calls that I think you will get complaining about panhandling in the first place, because having access to both sides of traffic can mean the difference between making $3 a day and making $10 a day for some. While there are programs to help homeless people, help homeless people eat and find jobs, panhandling will still exist regardless of those. Restricting access to medians statistically places in places like Sacramento or Nevada, for example, has only served to incentivize or rather oversaturate areas of like high foot traffic and residential situations where notoriously and statistically homeless people are more likely to be targeted for hate crimes and violence against them. I have a statistic here from NHCH, that's the National Healthcare for the Homeless Association. Over six years, there were 303 incidences of assault and 169 murders at the hands of people who do own homes. Any risk of increased violence, in my opinion, means that the ordinance defeats its own purpose of public safety. This is why I think it was the biggest mistake to omit the environmental impact of homelessness in the studies and in the statistics that are cited in the ordinance itself. I think without an environmental impact study that specifically cites homelessness and panhandling in particular, this ordinance is misinformed and ultimately defeats the purpose of public safety. Now on to what is included in the ordinance. Thayer v. Warchester indicates that municipalities must go back to the drawing board when failing to define particularly the threat to public safety and provide a law that is precise and narrow and specific only to conduct that constitutes such a threat. This ordinance specifically cites traffic incidences. I think it's a little bit messed up to blame the victim in these situations to say that it is the responsibility of them to not get hit by cars. Moreover, Cutting v. Portland indicates that governments must use the least restrictive means necessary when it comes to traffic safety, and this is applying to medians specifically. Again, none of the ordinance cites precedents specific to medians. Okay. So the only research in the proposal specific to medians is a paragraph with a box around it for emphasis coming from "A Policy on Geometric Design," which actually goes so far as to say the medians need to be more accessible. And it says that the medians need refuge. In this light, I think also an oversight in this situation is the arbitrary and unequal enforcement of the law that would discriminate against people with disabilities, for example. For a lot of us, that walk sign is not on for long enough, and it requires that we then stop at the median and wait for the next walk signal. I think that could obviously lead to an unjustified and arbitrary enforcement of such law. The ordinance also cites the AAA, a study which has no correlational connections to medians specifically, but it does say that there is a simple solution of merely adjusting the amount of time at a stoplight. That's it. That's in the AAA study itself. This makes the ordinance, in my mind, in direct violation of Reynolds v. Middleton, which requires that the city must prove that it has taken other methods, such as the methods that many proponents for this ordinance have suggested, before they can restrict access to the medians. This ordinance outlines no instances in which the city has tried something else. It also dictates that the city provide an actual evidence that the law... That the law doesn't restrict free speech of people who hold signs. It's not enough for us to just say that people can still panhandle, that people can still hold signs on the other sides of the street. It is the burden of the government to provide exact evidence specific to why it does not restrict free speech that is completely omitted and missing from the ordinance itself. I also believe that the plan violates the Fourteenth Amendment. Specifically, the law provide... Does not provide... It might provide when it goes into effect, but it does not provide a means through which the city will create notice of this prohibition, making it void for vagueness and in violation of due process as determined by Cutting v. Portland. Finally, I want to reiterate that we all know what this is. This is a rose in an anti-panhandling ordinance. McCollough v. Coakley maintains that a person's discomfort cannot be a reason to criminalize people under the First Amendment. Without sufficient data, the ordinance is merely speculative and only a reason... And only a reactionary ordinance because people do feel uncomfortable around panhandlers, because people feel uncomfortable looking people in the eyes, those who occupy the bottom rungs of society and don't have access to the same material... Material things that we all have and take for granted oftentimes. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Palm Hollick, 6517 South 115th Street. So I'll be brief here in the opposition to it. It's strictly because the ordinance doesn't go far enough. It leaves too much ambiguity... Ambiguity to where this is going to occur. So if the objective is to cut down on it, on the medians where it's taking place now... So I live nearby 108th and Q, and they're out there every single day. So fine, we're going to shove them off 108th and Q, move them from that median, and then they're going to be present in other locales around the city. So the problem isn't going away. We're just moving the problem out of the medians where it's at today. What we should be doing is finding a total solution to the problem and enacting an ordinance that bans it altogether, that just stops the problem completely. And then we can say that we can turn it over to the services that are available to the homeless people that are out there panhandling, some of them who have significant needs that are met by many of the organizations in the community, organizations that I support. But we're just shifting the problem from one spot in the city and transitioning over to other spots in the city. And then I fear that all of our time is going to be dedicated in the future to addressing the same problem, just in a different part of the city. So we're not stopping it completely. We're just kind of, you know, haphazard kind of putting something together to move the problem from one spot to another. So I just would ask that we go ahead and do a full ordinance that takes care of... Addresses the whole problem in totality instead of what we're doing here and just addressing some of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Luis Jimenez, 3126 Chicago Street. I am in agreement with the... Some of the opponents that said there's too much ambiguity. Also, the intent of the ordinance, it kind of reminds me of what I call the Trump complex. Is it a travel ban? Is it a Muslim ban? What is it? What's the intent? The intent is to get panhandlers off the median. It's not about public safety. What is it? What's the intent? The intent is to get panhandlers off the median. It's not about public safety. I know the mayor thinks it's about public safety, but you start at removing people from the median because they're panhandling, and then you think about public safety as a reason. And with all due respect, Mr. Gray, you were quoted as saying, "When you see adults doing it, standing in the median, asking for money, it won't be too long until you see children doing it." Well, I think if children see panhandlers, the first thing they're going to think of is, "That's not going to be me." They're very optimistic that way. So what kind of people are panhandling? I've seen one-legged men. I've seen an old man who has been in the elements. I've seen young people who -- young adults, excuse me, who have been kicked out or don't have a place to stay, and so they're asking for money for the time being. So we've got to think about how we can help them, not just write an ordinance just because we don't want to see them, because that's really what it's about. We don't want to see in the city. My biggest concern is that this is going to lead to arrests of these people. If that could be clarified in this ordinance, perhaps I might support it, but I don't think that that behavior should lead to arrest. That's not clear if it won't. During the pre-meeting, I heard a captain, I think you called him, speak to this, and he said, "There's -- somebody's out in the street. There's a million reasons why we can arrest them." That's what he said. So why do we need this ordinance if you could just arrest somebody? So that's my -- that's the gist of what I have to say. I don't believe this is about public safety, so Claire, make some more clarifications to the ordinance. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Yes, sir.
Hello, Jacob Wickert at 4509 Seward Street. I'll be short. I just think that if we're going to talk about public safety as far as pedestrians go, me being a person who's been hit by a car on my bike and have seen people get hurt cross, you know, crossing the street, I think that the issue should be placed more on our infrastructure, making larger medians, maybe more time, as some of the other speakers have talked about, for these people to cross. And I think that if we focus on that, you know, I think that would be a much better solution to solving this problem. And again, I don't think that people who are panhandling or the homeless should be punished for trying to be safe or trying to protect them. I don't think that's protecting them, and that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Okay, saying none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. So I agree median safety is important, and I think that we've all witnessed unsafe situations in our districts, and for me, that epicenter is 72nd and Dodge. And I think when you look at the list we were just handed out in terms of where the top intersection crashes have occurred, I would note the top four of those are within my district. Number one, 72nd and Dodge. Number two, 90th and West Dodge. Three, 72nd and Maple. And four, 102nd and West Maple. And there are several different tallies of how they calculate that, but that's total number of crashes in a recent year. So I wanted to ask just a few more follow-up questions that we started to talk about this morning in pre-council, and it sort of gets to a couple of questions that some testifiers asked about. Ryan, maybe you first, regarding implementation, should this pass? Talk about implementation of something like this and the list we've been handed in terms of where the medians are unsafe, but then, you know, reconciling that with 200 feet from an intersection and the other parameters within the ordinance here.
Ryan Lee, Assistant City Attorney. That list, as you indicated, is a measure of tallying the most dangerous intersections that the Public Works Department keeps. It lists 100 different intersections by different metrics, and it would be my advice or our advice, the Law Department's based upon, the way that the ordinance is drafted as proposed, that it enables the Public Works Director to use the criteria set forth in the ordinance to make a determination on which medians are following that not designated for pedestrian use and are therefore dangerous. There are several medians that meet that qualification, and the city has limited resources. I think that list is a good starting point, where we look at the most dangerous medians first, using that data, determine if any of those intersections meet the criteria of being six feet in width or less on roadways that have a high volume of vehicle traffic. The more vehicles that drive by, the greater your chances are of getting hit by one of those vehicles. A high speed limit, the higher this vehicle is traveling, the greater injury is going to be, to determine which medians are at those dangerous locations and which are not suitable for pedestrian use because of a safety hazard.
So those would most likely be prioritized. In other words, if this passed, it's not like two weeks or even six months from now that all 100 intersections on this list would have -- either qualify or have the ability to be determined, applying to this ordinance, right?
That's correct. And in order for this ordinance to be enforced, there has to first be a sign on that particular median. So an intersection may have four medians, but if only two of those medians qualify under the criteria set forth in the ordinance, a sign would have to be placed on those two medians, and the restriction would only apply to those two medians.
Yeah, so only if you've received the sign, been analyzed and determined by the Public Works Department that you apply and justify based on safety tallies and conditions. It still only applies to you if you've been determined to have that sign and therefore, at that point, is enforceable.
That's correct.
Okay. Chief Davis, if you don't mind, if you could speak to the enforcement issue a little bit. Congratulations on your recent promotion, by the way.
Just a transfer.
Transfer?
Yeah, thank you.
It's a big assignment, though. You have a lot of responsibility, which we appreciate.
Thank you.
And I think this would probably fall within your jurisdiction, so I know ultimately, if one is violating the conditions of this ordinance and a sign is posted, ultimately one could be cited with a citation, but I don't think in practice that's how it would flow. Can you talk about the nature of enforcement or how that would probably roll out in a practical sense?
The officers are able to use discretion and would be able to ask the individual to continue crossing the street onto the corner where it would be a safer place to practice their freedom of speech or whatever it is they're doing. I mean, if it's a matter of them just crossing the street, that's not addressed in the ordinance of something we would enforce. I think it's maintaining presence on the median past crossing.
Probably in multiple fashion, I think, like in other similar situations. I presume officers would give warnings, request they move. Only citation may only come into play if someone is not responding or being there three and four times after being asked to move, all those kind of things, and given a chance to do that.
That's correct.
I appreciate that approach, and I do think I wanted to note a letter received from the ACLU, which I think does make some good points, and I think are actually consistent with the answers you just gave, which are that, should Omaha proceed with this ordinance, that the number of prohibited medians be limited in number only to the truly dangerous intersections like we're talking about on this list, and that the police should, whenever possible, use verbal warnings in lieu of arrests or any kind of citations, and I think that's certainly the intent you expressed. But then I'd also say I agree with their final point, too. When at times this could apply to someone who is panhandling, I think their point is that, should this ordinance pass, there still is much more work to do for those that may be homeless or in need. There's much more the city and the community can be doing to address those in poverty with or without this ordinance, and I just wanted to point that out, too, that I think that's an important point for us all to think about. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Gir.
Yeah, I thought we were going to have some sort of legislative record offered today that provided the anecdotal evidence for stating a case for why this ordinance is necessary other than to regulate people among the various groups who hang out in intersections, in the medians within those intersections, and why that was not a safe place to be. Because I've had briefings that are not in the legislative record from Public Works, from the traffic engineer, from the city engineer, that basically talks about the many reasons why we should not have people there and why, as a city, we are on notice that there are people in dangerous places on property owned by the city that we need to then protect from the dangers of things, among others of cars and collisions, that then get, as a result of the collisions and the physics of the movements, they go in different directions, they fly up onto the medians, they could then be hit by those vehicles, or they strike the signs that are posted in the medians, which then could strike them, they could become projectiles, and why that is such a dangerous place to be as opposed to doing the activity on the sides of the road where the risk is so much less. But I don't -- I haven't heard that here today in the public record, and assuming there's someone who's in opposition to this ordinance that felt aggrieved by it or was issued a citation, I'm concerned that there wouldn't be an adequate basis in the record to support what it is that the administration's asking us to consider. So that's the first thing. The second thing I would say is that, since all we've heard about today is people who happen to be in the medians in the middle of the intersections, asking for money, that is it inescapable that that is the basis of it being a targeted group as opposed to any form of activity in the median being prohibited, whether you're a juggler, a candidate for political office, or any kind of activity? I haven't heard that, you know, talked about. And I haven't heard addressed why, if this is going to be a complaint-driven system, how it is the city would be protected from challenges if the only complaints the city were to receive were complaints about people who were solely engaged in activity asking for money because of economic circumstances, or that's because they wanted to do. So do you care to address those things?
Ryan Lee, Assistant City Attorney. There was a lot there, and I'll try and get to all of it. Submitted with the ordinance were a series of data, graphs, and reports that were used in the formation of the standards set forth in the ordinance. They are part of the legislative record, and they should have been distributed to each council member. They're also available on the city's website through the link to the council agenda. These include the number of traffic miles in the city broken down by classification types of crashes and the statistic that of all of the vehicle pedestrian crashes within the city of Omaha from between 2008 to 2014, approximately 74% occurred within approximately 200 feet of an intersection. Again, that data is and has been provided to the city clerk and is a part of the legislative record. Certainly, Mr. Koti and Mr. Fitz are here and can provide further explanation as to how that data was -- how it was created and the impacts of that data, especially with respect to speed, impact velocity, and risks of injuries and frequencies of accidents. With respect to the concerns you raised regarding targeted groups and implementation, I think versus the facial component of the ordinance or how it's written, again, that goes to how the ordinance is implemented and applied. There may have been concerns raised from members in opposition to the ordinance during the public comments section that focused on the sole issue of panhandling. But I think the question that the council should look at is, on the face of the ordinance, as it written, is it content neutral, or does it just single out panhandlers? If it's content neutral, if it applies to everyone equally, then on the face of the ordinance, as long as there's that significant government interest, that public safety purpose that is backed up by the data that was submitted to you, there would be enough to establish that public safety purpose there. When you move to the as-applied challenge, that may get into your concerns with implementation, and that might correlate to the issue you raised with the complaint-driven system.
Well, and it goes to the concession that there really won't be any signs put up initially, that there could be, and you've urged how that should be and where they should be in terms of the top X number of most dangerous intersections, but that's kind of what I'm getting to there.
And as I indicated in my introductory remarks, the Law Department has continued to have discussions with the Public Works Department and would advise, again, this data-driven approach, that an analysis be done of initially the 100 most dangerous intersections to determine whether or not those intersections fell within the criteria, and that initially those signs would go up based upon that analysis. Then, if there is a need for signs in the future, that the Public Works Department could use a variety of means to have those situations brought to their attention. We can't address, we don't know whether those means are an increase in vehicle accidents at an intersection or an actual pedestrian vehicle collision, or complaints from the public that alert the city to a potential hazardous situation.
So one of the -- one or more speakers said, "Well, if you do this," let's just use the one that we've heard about here, "the most dangerous intersection in the city in terms of the list, 2013, total number of intersection crashes, top 100 that was made part of the record, this is what I received, was this list." Number one is 72nd and Dodge. Do you see that?
I do.
Okay. So number three is 72nd and Maple. Number 12, 72nd and Cass. 15, 72nd and Pacific. 21, 72nd and Pine. So we can see 72nd is a pretty dangerous place in terms of, at those intersections, the frequency of collisions occurring, and so getting to what the opponents were saying. So if we -- if the Public Works Department follows your advice from the Law Department and says, "Okay, we're going to -- we're going to get -- we have money in our budget for $10,000, and it's about $1,000 or $1,500 to post the signs per intersection, so we're going to do the top 15." Are you with me?
I think I'm following you.
Okay, and that's what you're saying, I think, as I follow your recommendation, would be, with the limited resources you have as a city, you don't have unlimited budget, right?
Correct.
Take the most high-risk intersections for people getting hurt who may be in the median and then address those.
Correct.
So you did 15, so you've got the first group of 72nd Street intersections, but because 72nd and Pine is number 21, it didn't make the budgetary allocation of the top 15, and that hypothetical, at $1,000 apiece, and $15,000 in the budget. So they moved down to 72nd and Pine. There's no sign. Deputy Chief Davis gets the call. She sends the cruiser out, or the dispatch system does, and the person's there, there's no sign. There's no ticket, right?
This ordinance would then not be able to be enforced at that location. That is correct.
So in some respects, whatever that activity may be, whether it's asking for money or holding a sign to, you know, vote for whoever for Congress or city council or whatever, that would be something that they could not be compelled by color of law or citation to stop doing.
With this particular ordinance.
I think you've answered my questions. Thank you. I think we -- if other council members are like me, I get complaints from people all the time about people standing on medians asking for money. And it's not just because, as I heard here by some say, although I have heard people say that they don't like that activity for the activity that it is, they just don't want to see it there. I do also I do also get a fair number of the people who are complaining that's saying that there's just not activity confined to the limited space of the median, when that activity happens to be activity engaged in asking for money, that there's a process of solicitation and collection that then goes into the street to collect, which then, when the green light for the turn lane at these major intersections happens, causes these stop-starts, which then causes rear-end collisions. So, not just expressing concern about the activity in the median, but what happens to third parties who are using the intersection as motorists, that they feel it's dangerous to their safety. It would be, it's akin to the acceleration principle of cars getting on the on-ramp to the interstate, and then all of a sudden the car in front of you is stopping unexpectedly. At intersections, when the light turns green, we're trained to step on the gas, right? So, when the car in front of you then stops suddenly and they're handing out money out the window, it's a dangerous situation. So, to me, that's probably been 20, 25% of the complaints I've had, is people who are concerned, hey, I was about to get in this collision because a car in front of me stopped to give money when the light had turned green. So, it's a tough issue. There are people who engage in political activity in these medians. It happened in my primary campaign for the city council. There was one candidate who didn't make it through the primary, but that was his chosen go-to place in District 3 was to find the busiest, high-visibility intersections, and then go hold his signs and wave, and had his flags, and it's kind of catchy, actually. I mean, tip the cap to the guy. It was very dangerous, in some cases, when those medians were narrow because the placards he held over his shoulders were wider than the median that he was standing on. So, I can hear what the opponents are saying, and I share your concern for the plight of the people who genuinely are in the circumstances where they have nowhere else to go, they have no money, they have no place to stay, they have desperate circumstances. We've learned from news reporting that not all people standing in the medians asking for money in that class of people that this ordinance is a part of addressing, who are basically doing it as a way to earn a living. And I don't know, in case of the news story that I saw, that that was something that people thought who were giving was genuinely occurring, was, am I doing this to somebody who doesn't really need the money? This is how, this is their job, versus someone who's down on their luck, for whatever reason, and has good intentions of trying to help. And for the person who testified, and I think it was from the gentleman from the South Omaha, who says, "Give to the cause." Spot on. You give to the Stevens Center, you give to the Lydia House, the Open Door Mission, the Francis House, they do so much good, Salvation Army, Goodwill. That is an educational endeavor that we all can do better doing because they help so many people in far more effective ways. And certainly, the people who are in medians who are addicted to, whether it be alcohol or other things, that are causing messes, they just don't happen there, too. They happen in alleys, they happen on sidewalks, they happen on park benches, they happen all sorts of places. As a community, we all can do better in that.
... approach.
Yeah. So, I see both sides of this in terms of the concerns, but the lawyer side of me says, when you, as a government who own this median, it's not just what you know, what you should have known, the city is on notice as to the danger in these narrow medians for people getting hurt. And just because maybe no one has reported an injury to us today from a car striking someone engaged in activity in a median, or from a projectile traffic sign that got knocked over in a collision in one of these intersections, we know that they are at high risk in these dangerous intersections for those types of incidents. And at some point, you have to say, okay, there's certain places where you shouldn't be, and we have to protect the public from getting hurt, and we have to protect the people who are driving who have these stop-go incidents, like we're saying, because we know this is a risk. So, while I haven't ultimately decided my vote, that's kind of what I'm leaning right now, the way I'm thinking about it, and I want to thank everybody for coming down, and I guess, do we vote next week?
Next week.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, President Gray. Ryan, I just had a couple of quick questions for you. First off, thank you for all this work, because I know how much you put into it. I can't imagine how many hours you have. But this, what we received today is exactly what I was looking for. So, my question, just like earlier, is the same thing. This is the top 100 intersections for crashes. How many, as a city, are we going to look to for this ordinance? 25, 60, 75, or 100?
I think that will be up to the discretion of the Public Works Director determining maybe the budget that might be available. I think it's certainly the best starting point is to identify the most dangerous intersections using those metrics, and then determine if there are medians in those intersections. There may not be medians in all of those intersections, and then determining if those medians do qualify under the criteria that's in the ordinance.
Okay. Sorry, Mr. Stube, I do have a question for you, then.
Bob Stube, Public Works.
Do you know how much we have in the budget? How far, and I'm only asking because now that I have this information, I can actually go out in my district, down to the number that we're looking at taking care of, and see if this does play a factor in my district.
So, within the Public Works Traffic Division, we do have a budget line item that is for signs, and not knowing what that number is at this point in time, that would fall under that particular situation. So, if you look at the ordinance, it says that the Public Works Director may prohibit, and if the Public Works Director makes a determination that that location will be prohibited, then signs will have to be installed. As I mentioned this morning, is that obviously, Councilmember Jerram mentioned 72nd and Dodge as being essentially the number-one intersection from standpoint of accidents. That would be one location that I would consider as a location that we would probably consider prohibiting. And I also want to also thank Mr. Jerram for mentioning the fact that there are situations where we don't have accidents, where individuals will, like he said, make a turn. There's an expectation as a driver that when that green arrow goes on, the cars will move, and there's a potential that you have near misses. We have no knowledge of that. We potentially could get a citizen call in and said, I was potentially, I was within a situation where I could have been in an accident because of somebody doing something in the median. It might not necessarily be an individual that is collecting money. It could be an individual like Mr. Jerram's opponent that was handing out a small flag, and somebody stopped to take that flag from that particular individual. It could also be a situation where individuals standing in the medians don't have the access to a push button. And so, if they're standing there and they want to get to the other side of the street, they got to take a chance to get across the street because they don't have that access. So, we will take a look at these locations, we will make a determination, we will have to make a determination as far as how much money we have available within our budget to address this. 72nd and Dodge, I think, indicated this morning that if you look at the signage required for that, would be about $1,000 bucks.
Thank you. So, I'll just look at all 100 to be safe. So, on this, it does say pedestrian crashes, but it doesn't decipher between if they were actually standing on the median during the crash, or on the sidewalk where they could legally stand regardless if this ordinance passes or not, correct?
Ryan Weason, Assistant City Attorney. And I believe that statistic was put in there, again, as part of the legislative record to show that these pedestrian vehicular collisions, regardless of whether, you know, where they occur within the right of way, is that they occur throughout all times of the day, that there is a heightened time of collisions in the daylight hours, especially during high-traffic rush hours, and just to show that it's an issue, a danger that exists, you know, 24 hours a day, it's not limited to specific hours or specific conditions.
Okay, thanks. And I guess just one last one. Councilman Jerram had made me think of this, of why we were talking about it, and possibly maybe Murthy had brought this up before, where we have, sorry for calling you out, I know you don't want to say anything today, but we have speed limit signs, not on every street, but we know what the speed limit is based on what area you're in. So, if it's going to be $1,000 a sign, and we see in the top 40, we have 15 on 72nd Street, would we be required to put it on every single median, knowing that there's a sign down the street which would serve the same as a speed limit sign?
Yes, that's correct, because the prohibition isn't a blanket prohibition on all medians. It is only prohibition on the most dangerous medians, and again, those are six feet in width or less, they may have a certain slope or cross-slope, and so, they aren't flat enough to safely accommodate a person. They're within 200 feet of an intersection, so there are various factors, and so, in order to give the public notice of what conduct is prohibited, that sign is important on each specific median.
Okay, thank you. That's it for today.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Mr. President, hopefully two quick items. I know people say it's, this isn't about public safety, but remember that this is just addressing the medians, that people can still go to the corners and have their same opportunities to wave signs for political purposes, for, you know, statements, or for asking for money. You know, let's remember that as well. It's also, it kind of hit me a little bit, too, that it seems interesting that, you know, when we were kids and your mom told you not to cross the street, you know, dangerous intersections, heck, I think I was probably 12 before I could cross, you know, 84th or 90th and Center without my parents being around, but that's probably because they didn't trust me. But it seems interesting that we have to have laws and ordinances to address common sense issues to a degree, but that's my political sideline. Also, I hate to be the spreader of fake news, and I hope this is true to a degree. It's very unfortunate, but as we are sitting here debating this issue, someone texted me a picture of an accident on the Dodge Street exit ramp from 480 getting onto 30th Street. I think you all know where it is, kind of down by Boyestown Hospital, or the former Creighton Hospital and Boyestown Institute, that I think we all have seen, there's a gentleman who's down there on many occasions doing exactly what we're talking about today as well, who I believe was hit. And I hope that's not true, but I have a picture sitting here in front of me that has a number of police officers and squads sitting around that intersection, and it appears to be attending to someone who may have been hit.
Okay, I guess that will, did you have anything, Mr. Melton?
I'll just be quick. Yeah, I just want to make this known, we're doing this for the safety of the people standing on the medians. It's a free-speed issue, I understand that, and that's fine, but I don't want to see somebody who is in need of anything getting hit and run over by a car. This, I don't care what they're doing, whether they're asking for money, whether it's a kid. I had a lawyer the other day tell me he saw a young girl who was raising money for her Girl Scout trip or something like that, but apparently her parents let her stand in the middle of the median and ask for the money because people are getting it. Well, she passed out, she got hot and passed out, so she passed out half in the street. Fortunately, nobody did hit her, and people were able to call 911. But again, these are things that can happen, and we really do need to be concerned for not just the safety of the drivers, and the concern of the drivers that may rear-ended, but they're not, at least should have airbags and seat belts and be protected by a car. We have to be concerned about the people that are putting themselves in the middle of the street and loitering there for whatever reason it is, because we know it's dangerous. And not everybody, I know that there are a lot of people that we're talking about homeless. I agree with you that there's homeless issue. I can tell you that people who loiter in the middle of medians, that they aren't all homeless people loitering in the middle of medians as well. But I was at the same conference that I was at last year where I met Mayor Suthers of Colorado Springs, who said he was drafting an ordinance that's very much like ours. Went back to the same conference in Fort Worth this year, and I did a panhandling breakout session. And so, thank you, Ryan, for helping me with giving the status of the law, because it was very helpful, and giving people, and I asked Mayor Berry from Albuquerque if he would speak during my presentation and talk about what he's done in Albuquerque. And so, I think that there are other things that we can do, programs that'll help the homeless, which is what I hear about, that don't have anything to do, though, with trying to make sure that people who are, for whatever reason, loitering in medians are going to be safe, and we have to make sure that they're safe. In addition, we do need to do other things, and really, it's an education piece, and I know we've talked about, and I know President Gray has heard me say so many times, what we need to do is support our homeless shelters. We have a lot of helpful people in our community, and there are more programs. This isn't about that, though. This is about the safety of our citizens, or maybe visitors, who for whatever reason are in the middle of medians on dangerous streets. And if somebody hasn't gotten hurt already, seriously, somebody will. Why should we wait until somebody gets killed before we do something about it? So, I think that's what we're doing with this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And there are no more lights, it closes the public hearing, and next item.
Non-action items, items 60 through 93 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date. The item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Motion to adjourn. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerram.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed 7 to 0, meeting adjourned at 4:47.